In his absence, I'll call this meeting to order. Members of the County Board of Commissioners are advised hereby of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and the appearance of such conflict, and further are instructed to refrain from participating in any matter coming before this Board of County Commissioners with respect to which there is a conflict of interest or appearance of such conflict. Jacob, would you do the invocation for us?
Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you for this day, and thank you for all your many blessings, Lord. I pray that you go with us through this meeting. God help us keep our community, the people in our community, in the forefront of our decisions. God help us make the best choices for them. I pray that you continue to be with all our departments, especially our first responders and our nurses, people on the front lines of this pandemic. God just be with them, be with the people that's experiencing sickness, God, and that in our community. God just give them grace and mercy. Go with us the rest of this day, watch over us, and keep us safe. In Jesus' name, amen.
If you're standing in this place, do it. We have a flag out there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to every public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. All right. Can you change it to the agenda, Jason?
Yep, number eight, Commissioner Cody will not be able to attend, so that'll come off. And then, under number 12, new business, we'll discuss transit drug, the new transit department drug policy. That is it.
Rushed up, ready.
Sir.
All right, good. All of that. Thank you. All right. Everybody's had time to review events, workshop, and regular meeting, etc., until we first continue meeting October 1 and 4, and the emergency meeting October 12. Any questions or comments on any of those? If not, I'm going to approve.
Question? Sir?
Anybody? All right. Jason, are you going to do the honor of that?
I guess so, yeah. Look at this. I figured. Let's set these right here real briefly. So, it's, as a lot of us in the room know, and maybe some don't, unfortunately, we've come to some retirement of some of our great service members to the county, and I guess the least we could do is to show appreciation. They've spent a lot of time here and done a lot of things for this county. And I wish we could do a whole heck of a lot more, because it probably doesn't justify the fact of what you have done and what you've meant to the county. So, put a little words together for both of you. Working with both of you has been such a pleasure. I've always appreciated your thoughtful, steady approach to solving any problem, large or small. You've proved that it doesn't take a loud voice to accomplish tremendous things. It was great working with you. Your work truly made a lasting impact, one that has changed Graham County probably for the better forever, in so many ways. I want to say personally, thank you for everything you've done. Best of luck, and enjoy your retirement. I believe you well deserved. I want to say first, with Tim not completely retiring, I hope you're still going to come back on part-time. Great, so, Tim?
About 30 days.
Tim? If you will. A really nice thing. 23 years. And then, especially out to Mr. Larry, who's been our EM, EMS director, and his 35 years with Graham County. I mean, I can't imagine. So, Mr. Larry Hendry, thank you.
Appreciate it, sir. For both of you. It's commendable. You guys are taking good care of the community and the people. So, don't be stressful.
Are you the new boss?
Yes, sir.
Oh. Now I've got to meet you. 6:00, 10:00.
Thank you. I don't have any more comments. Any strangers, please?
Thank you, sir.
Yep. See y'all.
Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
All right. Would you do number seven, Jason?
Absolutely. It is a great pleasure, my honor, to introduce, and I wanted to make sure he had a chance to talk to the Commissioners and anybody else, the public, that who are here and who might be listening, our new EM, EMS director, straight from Lexington, South Carolina, and then further back from Homer, Alaska, Mr. Philip Boils.
Very much looking forward to continue on here, and this is just like home, so I hit the ground running with both feet, and hopefully, we have many, many years to come at which I can help serve the public. So, thank you for putting your trust in me going forward.
Thank you, tell me you're, yeah, absolutely.
And you guys, if you don't have anything for him right now, because if you will stick around, we'll do a little bit of stuff with you to close.
Yes, sir.
All right. Good to go. I think that's it.
All right. That takes you right into your report.
All right. We'll jump into the manager's report. I'll do a few items of the manager's report. A lot of it is just kind of updates, or just reminders of what's, could be coming down with hype, and then I'll jump in from that. I'll go straight into my manager, or project manager's report. So, just an update, number one on the manager's report is the elementary school gym. Of course, you know, when there's a word to contract to do those sturdy, sturdy of the walls, it's more or less, we're not tearing anything down, which I think is good news at the end of the day. They're going to put some, weld some steel framing in there, and anchor supports to structurally sound the brick saw on both sides of the walls in the gym, and hopefully, that's going to be the fix that we need in there. There's still be some work to do with the bleachers and some flooring, but we'll hopefully have it up and running before the beginning of the new year. The construction for that portion, or the contracted portion, started last Wednesday. Probably be two to three weeks, and I'll start reporting that on the construction project manager's report. Estimated with bleachers and everything, 30 to 45 days, so target certainly by the first of 2022, have that project done. Unfortunately, not good news on item number two. As everybody probably figured, we still do not have our sanitation department truck, and with the instruction from the board, I have authorized our attorney, Mr. J. Coward, to issue a letter of dissatisfaction with service, and we'll wait to hear back from them. We're going to make the approach of, we're not happy with it, either get the truck fixed in a week's time, or provide our money back. That's the approach I feel we have to take at this point, and had way too long.
I think they should at least extend the warranty on the vehicle, I don't know how much warranty it's got on it, but I think after all these issues, it's brand new, that they should at least extend the warranty by, you know, two, three, five years or something. And it's unbelievable, something like that. Absolutely, that's my two cents. Absolutely.
Yeah, we even purchased the warranty after that, too, and sat in on that.
So, give us the warranty and give us our money back. There you go.
Will you do me a favor? Will you send me a copy of that warranty?
Sure.
Sure. I've got the invoice, but I don't think I've got one.
I will do that.
All right. Moving on to item three, is go over a little bit of about the CDBG grants, a little bit of an update. The CDBG, which is Neighborhood Revitalization, CEBG NR, the RFP for Legal Services, and RFQs for Environmental Services was issued, and proposals are being evaluated. If not enough proposals were received, the RFQ, RFP will be issued a second time, and then we'll be able to reuse any of those proposals from that time. We did get two proposals for Environmental Services. I don't think we got one for Legal Services. I think the problem with the one from Environmental Services is they did not provide the bid for the actual numbers that I could find in the attachment, so we're going to probably have to go back out with those again, and then we'll be able to use what we get at that time. So, we've also, in conjunction with the Neighborhood Revitalization Grants, we've asked Ms. Monica Chevalier with Withers, Ravenell, to solicit for a CDBG housing rehab specialist to help us with those projects going forward, as we have a lot of things, a lot of grants that we're processing, and a lot of other projects going on within Graham County. She's agreed to do that, and we'll work forward with her. We received the release of funds, conditions, on 8 October, and so we're ready to push forward with getting the RFPs and everything else in place, and start doing some Neighborhood Revitalization once we get a rehab specialist on board. With regards to the CDBG CD, or Coronavirus, that is a grant that we have gotten money to help with Community Kitchen Renovations, Workforce Training for Paramedics. We'll be working with you, which is a great thing, too. We talked about training going forward, enhancement for the senior center, for additional food distribution, expanding capacity, IT equipment for the schools. We'll be working with Withers, Ravenell on that as well, and that's Ms. Alice Briggs, and we received the release of conditions and fund letter on 24 August to August 2, go forward with those projects, and on administration and procurement. So, that's good news on both of the, on this both CDBG level, to be able to have projects that we can get going on right away, and try to get done as quick as possible, but I put that caveat in that it's just like anything else that's happening out there. With my projects and ordering materials, everything is delayed. It's unfortunate, but it is good news that we have some positive things happening with the CDBG grant program. If there are no questions, I'll move on to the funding support for Community Led Vaccine Initiative. A little bit of update on that, after the board approved the $5,000, we're going to kick off, that'll kick off on 13 November at the high school with a mass vaccination event, and I've provided you a handout with sort of, if you look with the manager's report, you'll see what some of the events, clubs, and areas that can be given, some of the money that we talked about donating for each person, and how that's going to kind of work, and then, of course, work towards the beginning of the year, through November, December, to try to get this initiative, and get our members up for vaccinations. So, looking forward to that getting started off as quick as possible, and get people vaccinated.
The band is trying to raise $17,000 for the uniform. We can take a shot for the band.
Take a shot for the band, I like that. I like.
I could already have, I could take my booster for the band.
Is that camp?
University Church.
Yeah, that'd be, I mean, that'd be, if we get everybody a booster or a regular series, yeah, I'd say, because that's going to help. Any of those, any vaccinations are going to help. It's on you, it's going to help the facilities in our surrounding areas, so we're encouraging that 100%. And just, item number five is just a reminder that we, that I've been talking to the 91st Civil Affairs Battalion, just about them doing training, and I'll get you, I talked about you getting them, they're coming up, they're looking at doing just training for emergency management and that thing, and I think it'd be good for me and you to get involved with them heavily. They're just going to be here, probably be in civilian clothes, and it'd be perfect for us to kind of play that role, that scenario, what may happen, and that's going to, they're supposed to be up here, and I'll show you the letter if you'll come by, or we'll get together this week.
Okay.
On, on 2nd November. I haven't seen any change in that, in the schedule for that, so, just, they like the area because of the, being rural, remote, in the mountains, and it offers them a different training platform than where they come from, and differently, you know, on the flat ground or on a coast, or something like that.
Got it.
Yeah, mountain atmosphere, so. That was just a reminder, just that we did approve them and acknowledge that they'd be in our area at that time. Item number six, regarding mapping in offices here, it's, we're finding out that our 10-year-old printer is pretty expensive to repair, and it's pretty much on its last leg, if not, it's down in shock. Costs about $3,000 to repair, but I think the problem with that is, there's stuff that's, the parts and stuff is not available for a lot of that stuff, so we, we'll be looking at, once we get quotes in, replacement costs about $11,000, and we'll come to the board, bring those to the board for approval once we do. We use those for a lot of things, the printer, a lot of mapping, different things that we're dealing with, John.
And we can take what we're out of rebound for.
Part of it could, because a lot of what we're doing is for rebound. They do a whole lot.
Excellent. Benefits, we're from mapping and aerial photos and anybody.
Probably about 75%, because I know we've used it to do plans for, you know, projects, but primarily, it's rehab.
Thank you.
All right.
And then, lastly, item seven, just a follow-up of one of our closed sessions, the ID Department Network Technician position is open. Myself, the HR Director, and IT Department Administrator and Director will be in interviews on Thursday, so we'll try to get that position filled as soon as possible. If there are no questions about the manager's report, I'll move on to project manager's report. First item, the RDA Moose Ranch subdivision. Notice to proceed was given on 4 October, after learning that DR felt, felt like they could get materials and equipment, and soon enough to get the project done before the extreme cold weather in January, February hits. So, they agreed to accept the notice to proceed. We were willing to work with them if we needed to into spring, but they were willing to accept the notice to proceed, so they're in procurement right now. We will be holding a groundbreaking schedule for 26 October onsite over on Moose Ranch. Any and all, the board is invited to show up. That, and that will include Dogwood and the other, Dogwood Health Trust and the other, the USDA funding agencies, plus the architect, engineer, Gil, and our contractor, somebody from the RDA, and hopefully, somebody represented from the county. And we'll also invite, we'd like to invite Grand Star out. If you want to get with me on the date times, I'll be glad to give you the information for that. Important housing opportunity, hopefully, for the county, and we're excited about finally being able to get this, I think it's been about a five-year project, so we're getting started on it, it's really exciting and a good thing. Item number two is the cemetery building. We, actually, four, two, and three, which number three is the recreation department building, I'll cover them separately on percentages, but right now, the building is still on, on track to be here November the 2nd, so that is good news. Cemetery building, we're, we, using BLE, which is our testing, tunnel layman's engineering, they're doing our testings, we're working with cemetery building. There was a little bit of pumping on the filter that we did, so we moved it out, put stone in, we're good to go on it, and that's about 90% complete with the civil seat, about 85% complete. Plumbing is, the rough plumbing will go in the slab for that building next week, and then we'll, we're looking at pouring concrete on the following week. Rec Department is about 18% complete, total project site, civil, about 90% complete. I received anchor rods today for the metal building to go in the slab. I will, they'll start putting all the rebar and reinforcement in the slab tomorrow. We're looking at placing half the slab on Thursday and half the slab on Friday, about 20 yards each, including the footer. We will have footer compaction tested, building inspections is scheduled, and then my structural engineer will come out and look at the reinforcement before it's placed. Everything scheduled, so if it goes right, by the end of the week, we'll have a slab ready for steel building by Friday afternoon over at the rec building. So, that one's moving along well, we're happy to be where we are with that.
Both coming in November.
Yes, both buildings. I, we're, we're working out to see if, hopefully, if the buildings are, are split up on the truck, we'll just have one offloaded on one site, and then if we need to help with equipment, we can load, unload the other one on the other side. If it comes mixed up, I'll still get with our sanitation department, we'll have a trailer over there. I'd rather all, instead of offloading on the ground and having to pick it back up on a trailer, I'll have a trailer sitting there, and we'll just offload whatever goes to one site, and it's all going to be delivered to the rec building. As it stands right now, that's the location they've been given, and then we'll, we'll move it around as needed. And as you know, Engle and Sons is contracted, I've made them aware. Right now, they're scheduled to be, and I think it's going to work out, they're scheduled to be here the week after the building's, you know, onsite, and that gives us a little bit of time in case the, if there's anything that moves to the right a little bit with the building, you know, for a day or two. I think they're scheduled to be here that Fri, that Monday after that, so I think everything's going to work right for them to start, as long as our cylinder brakes come back from the concrete, and if, if we're within, I'm good with it, as long as Jacob is, if we're within 30% of where we should be after the second break, we're going to be good on our, on our totals with that, we'll be aside on that, so, you know, I don't think we're going to have to wait for 28 days, right, to be able to stay in that building.
Jason, if you would, please call Commissioner Conny Ward at 2595, on the phone behind, and let everybody sit in on the meeting.
Does you have to dial, I don't know, on this?
Yeah, just hit your speaker.
What is it?
Hit the little speaker.
No, what's the number?
2595.
Two.
May I turn the volume up a little?
Hey, Ms. Conny, it's Jason, can you hear us?
Hey, I can, I can hear you, Jason, so I'll get to hear everybody else, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
We're, going on, I don't know if you have the paperwork, we're on item four now of the project manager's report.
Okay, okay, Jim, thank you, Jason.
Yes, ma'am. And so, if there's any, we'll move on to four if there's no more questions or anything about the cemetery. As everyone's probably aware, the board elections renovations finally got back underway. We're about 32% complete, total framing, about 99, there's still, we still got the exterior door we got put in, a little bit of framing around that, a little bit of blocking that needs to go in, but it's pretty much complete. The MEP rough end, which is an important part of that inspection process, we're waiting to get all of them in, electrical's in, mechanical was at close, if not done today, and there's just a little bit of plumbing work that needs to be done, and our data, our IT side of it. So, it's about 92% on the MEP rough end, we'll, we'll call for inspections for that, probably next week, hopefully, and then we'll be able to insulate and get that inspected and move forward on the board elections, but right now, it's moving forward really well as well. Item five is the middle school sixth grade addition. Finally got, they finally got working with the foundation and concrete infitters, and the plumbing is, rough plumbing has been going in over there as well, and that project is showing at 31% complete, as we stand right now. The next two projects are basically another CDBG grant-funded project, and we're about 98% complete with the design getting ready for that to be approved by USDA for bid and contract, so hopefully, we'll be looking at that. That'll be a good project if we can't get it out by the later part of the year, which I think we should be, but it'd be good spring work to kick off if we get to that point. So, we're, we're a real good timing for both of those. Those both, again, I said it the last time, those both will become one contract, they'll be able to do the stream bank revitalization, get that all set back up to where we're not losing the road, and then clean out the river all the way down through there. So, we're real close to getting a design ready for bid on those two projects, which will become one. And then, last item, as I said from my report, I'll begin to report this now on the manager, project manager's report, it's the elementary school gym, expansion damages project repaired. It's about 35% complete, and I, the last project is the middle school shows you, and as you can see, when you see projected and actual, the projected was before they ran into what everybody warned them about, the swamp back there. They had to undercut a whole lot before they could ever get acceptable compaction, put a lot of gravel in there, so. So, there's two things that cause that, where they are showing their critical path isn't matching up. As you know, the delay in material and procurement, and then the issue with the unclassed excavation that is a problem with it.
Yeah.
Unless there's any questions, that's all I have.
Commissioner Eller didn't get here today, and I've been conducting the meeting, I can continue, or you can conduct it if you want.
Please continue, you're doing an outstanding, wonderful, outstanding, thank you so much, and I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Okay, let's go on to finance report.
Okay, I did want to dovetail off the manager Marino's report on the middle school, it was hot off the press, I just pulled down two change orders with a net add to that project of $58,268, with the bulk of that being the foundation and the bad earth. So, the county's share of that would be right at $15,000 to add to that.
How much, basically, I'm sorry, I couldn't understand you?
I'm sorry, the, the total net change order on the project is $58,268 add, and the county's share will be right at $15,000.
Okay, I have that.
And they did add 189 dates to the project due to the issues that manager Marino added in his report. So, that being said, I'll move into the finance report, and if you look on page one, you'll see that our general fund hash balance closed out the month of September, with $7,738,000 and some change. That is a negative variance, but I'm going to explain why here, man, and the 414,000 from this time last year, that's the first time in a long, long time, and it's very explainable, and, and you'll see here in just a few minutes as to why. Our capital project fund is standing a little bit below $2.5 million, it's $2,484,000. We have $114,000 in our capital project, school project fund, and then following the payment of the premium pay in early September, we reduced our American Rescue Plan Act balance to $266,596. Keep in mind that we do have to report to the federal government by the end of January what our plans are, so we'll be probably talking a little bit later on about having another workshop, because I'm going to have to report to the federal government what we're going to do with the remaining funds, plus how we anticipate using the second tranche that will come in May, okay? Page three, you'll see our tax collections are still healthy. For September, we got $295,797 in current year taxes, that's up from last year, a little under $264,000, so that's a good positive variance on that. Prior year taxes were $11,005, so our total collections for real property taxes in September was $36,802, which is again, up from $286,000 this time last year. VTS continues to grow, we have $55,021 come in on our VTS, and if you'll turn on page four, you'll see that we have collected to date $1,727,000 in our real taxes, and $176,000 in our VTS DMV, so we're ahead of this time last year by $225,000 in real and $13,000 in DMV. Looking at our property tax collection rate, it's real healthy at 23.5%, this time last year, we were a little over 20%, so I'm real pleased with that, especially in lieu of the fact that our total levy went up just a bit. We, we picked up our utilities this past month, so our total levy is a little higher, which typically, that would push down your tax collection rate, so we're still ahead. which typically that would push down your tax collection rate, so we're still ahead by three points, so I'm real pleased to, to see that. Page six, you'll see revenues into the general fund were $1 million 194,000, expenditures were $1 million 400,000. We had a deficit for the month of 209, this time last year was 237. So while we had a deficit, we're still staying ahead of, we're still staying ahead of the game from where we were this time last year as far as September's concerned. September saw me pay the semi-annual payment on the Health and Human Services building, plus we paid off our QZAP, which was exciting, I think I mentioned that in a previous meeting. So that's, that's good, because that allows toward this school project, it's going to open up more revenue coming out of sales tax to help fund the middle school, and that's, that was the, the goal that we set when we decided to go out for that grant. Our surplus for the year to date is $592,000, it is higher than this time last year, but remember, we spent out, we paid for the stadium lights, so the difference on that level is the stadium lights. But that was a good investment that we made for helping the school system. If you'll look on page seven, you'll see that our sales tax opened up by $50,000 from this time last year. We got $259,000, that does not include our capital project or the additional quarter cent, that was about a little over $24,000, so we're still in a, a good positive variance with a little over $102,000 from this time last year, of which we've gotten 82, right out of 82,000 in our 524 expansion, $25,000, and that'll go toward the schools. Looked back 10 years and said, how much has our sales tax grown in a decade? 134%. So, you know, that's, that's good news, and our, our economy here is doing well. We now have collected on the quarter cent, a little under $574,000 since we started collecting it, and tomorrow, I'll be transferring a little over $101,000 for the first quarter of the year into the capital management.
It's a payment on the quarter.
It is. I'm excited. Our collections on back taxes continue to grow, you'll see that we, since we started the foreclosure process and sort of tracking it, we've collected $483,000 on those old, old balances since 2013, and then in total since 2013 in back taxes, we've collected $643,000. That's 60s on the mill rate, so that's a good thing. I said I would explain to you the difference in the cash balance, number one, was the stadium lights that we funded out of fund balance, and then as Commissioner, as county manager Moreno had, gave your report, we've spent out some money on capital projects. This money will be back financed, okay? We've just got to continue to work through the hoops with local government commission, they were trying to find loans, they ought it, but we've spent just a little under $42,000 so far on the election board, a little shy of $7,000 on the rec building, this is through, this is the year the bills came in today that we, we processed. About 500 recs on the cemetery, I think we got some bolts or something there, I haven't picked that up yet. And then our county match on the middle school was a little over $328,000. That has been funded out of the sales tax, so that's, you know, that's not coming out of property tax, that's coming out of sales tax. So that sales tax growth has been very much a blessing as we've worked our way through it. The next page, you'll see, just to give you a breakdown of the premium pay, the total, including FICA and retirement, that was $553,469, of which 300, a little shy of $375,000 went to EMS employees, $29,750, that's including benefits, went to emergency management, and a little bit under $149,000 went to our health department. Any questions on that part?
Thank you. I don't have any questions, but if we could think back to page four just for a second.
Uh huh.
I know we certainly have some good employees working in our tax offices, and, but I would really like the record to show that, that we appreciate the taxpayers in this county.
Absolutely.
It's been two hard years, prices have gone unbelievably through the roof and towards the sky, still going, and I, I just appreciate our taxpayers for coming through, because I know it hasn't been easy for many, many of them.
Absolutely, that is, that is a very good observation that we can make there. Just, next is your budget report, we should have 75% left in our departments, pretty much all of our departments are at, or within budget or staying ahead of the game, ahead of the line. I don't know, my fingers don't want to work, we're right at budget, so that's good news for us, that's good news on the budget side. Any questions? We're calling it.
One question.
Uh huh.
It probably has nothing to do with anything. When you were talking about school, part of the sales tax, a little, a lot of years ago, when we, it was a lot of years over there, yes, we, we paid the, the school payment with Article 3940 or something, and then the surplus was, was the county's, is that still like that with whichever tax number is used?
We have to, each, each article has a percentage that goes to the schools. So it either has to be paid toward debt service, capital projects, or, or we revert it to the schools, but they have to spend it toward capital needs. So this past year, we held the money, that was, we did have a surplus, but we, we used up the surplus on the middle school project. So every time that I make a payment, I'm keeping a spreadsheet of how much is being used up so that we have full transparency with the school system, so they know exactly where we are.
That's good, thank you.
Yeah.
Or anything else?
I have a couple of budget amendments.
Okay.
Budget amendment number six relates to some additional funding for a food stamp program of $10,865, this is COVID money.
Most approved budget number, budget amendment number six. And all in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
And budget amendment number seven is just to recognize some emergency needs, performance grant money that we need to go ahead and budget, once we figured out how much we could get in, I've been a little conservative with it, $3,000.
Motion budget, second. And all in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
And just another good news on another grant that the county has been successful in, it caught off the presses. About three or four weeks ago, the health department applied for some Dogwood trust money to do an in-depth needs assessment study of assistance abuse epidemic in McCounty. It will also support the salary for the peer support specialists. We are still working under the ARC grant, this will help extend that and allow us to continue to do work at our peer support specialists, and so the county was awarded $242,818 for that, three-year grant. So that's, that's some good news on the horizon. That's all I have.
And there is the social program. That's, keep still getting help, that's good. All right, thank you, Mr. Moreno. Anybody sign any public comment? Okay, we'll move on to item number 12, discussion items. We have releases in the amount of $6,424.38, and discoveries in the amount of $1,688.38, most approved those. And all others in favor?
All right.
All right, thank you. And we have Ben Booth, David Manley, I'm going to say that's the transportation advisory board.
Yes.
TAB, that needs to be reappointed, so most to appoint those two fine folks to the TAB board. Second, and all in favor? Anybody opposed? Billy Brown's terms evidently up on the travel tourism board, so most to appoint him to a one-year term on travel tourism board. And all in favor?
All right.
Thank you. In your own business, Mr. Moreno.
Got the transit drug policy, I'm going to get, can we have copies of that?
I didn't make my copies usually, but there's not been, there's a couple of changes with the drugs, that was the only thing that FTA has mandated, so that came straight from federal. But I do need your approval, so she can send it in with her reporting.
All right. So most to approve that drug policy. And all in favor on the drug policy?
All right.
All right.
I will send that to you in email, maybe a twenty-one in the paper, just came later.
Okay, nothing else in the open session, we have a couple of things in close, so we will need a motion to go into closed session under GS 143-31811A1356, with privileged or confidential information, attorney-client privilege, personnel and or contracts, and with a 10-minute break. All in favor of it?
All right.
Thank you. You'll see, I haven't seen y'all in a while.